Good evening, everybody. Welcome to this regular meeting of the Vader City Council. It is Wednesday, November 26, 2023, and it is 6:04 PM. Roll call.
Mayor Shosha?
Here.
Janet Charlton?
She has not contacted City Hall.
Jason Daly?
He also has not contacted City Hall.
Randy Hall?
Yes.
Mike Parsons?
Here.
Michael Ferguson?
Here.
We have a quorum. Fled allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mayor's report, item number one, water system receivership. It says on here the county is still working on the agreement. Obviously, the agreement did come back and it's in our packet, and we will discuss that later on in the meeting. Number two, Park Sport Holiday Bazaar fundraiser and tree lighting. It is next Saturday, December 2nd. Vendors are still wanted for that. There'll be some decorating earlier midweek next week out there at the jail. So if anyone's interested in helping out, go ahead and contact somewhere on the park board and they can direct you to the town. Training for elected officials, reminder to do any of your online training. And lastly, La Made Enterprises are solid waste provider. Per their contract, which we approved last year, they are going to be raising rates by, was it 5%? Is that what it said? I think it's, I think it's five-ish percent. So.
It's like a dollar or something?
Yeah, a dollar or something. It's linked to the consumer price index. So, excuse me, Mr. Hall?
5.25.
5.25 percent. So, it said it's tied to the consumer price index, and that's the rate this year, and so that's part of the contract. Council reports, any members of the council have anything to report? All right, hearing none, agenda approval. I do want to add one item onto the agenda, council to discuss police coverage for the city.
I'll make a motion that we approve the agenda for tonight's city council meeting with the addition of talking about law enforcement.
A motion by Mr. Parsons to approve the agenda with the addition of the law enforcement discussion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second of Mr. Ferguson, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Minutes approval.
I make a motion that we approve the city council meeting minutes for November 8th, 2023.
We have a motion by Mr. Parsons to approve the meeting minutes from November 8th, 2023. Do we have a second?
Has it?
Second of Mr. Hall, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Voucher approval.
Make a motion that we approve vouchers for the end of November 2023 at $16,553.36. Total for November 2023, $162,988.82.
We have a motion by Mr. Parsons to approve the vouchers as stated, do we have a second?
Second.
Second of Mr. Ferguson, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed, motion carries. Special reports, planning committee couldn't be here tonight, but they did have a meeting last week. They were briefed on the two different subdivisions, just again, just being, getting familiar with them. There really hasn't been any significant changes from their original applications. And also, they were briefed on some upcoming developments with regard to comprehensive plan updates required by the state. Park sport, I believe, Mr. Jocelyn's here tonight.
Want me to scan him here?
Yeah, sure, just talk about parks.
Yeah, thank you for allowing me to come and invite me. My name's Ken Jocelyn, and I'm on the city park board. I think this is like my fifth or sixth term, I think, so didn't know if anybody knew that for the other couple of members and stuff. So, anyway, we had a meeting this week, and we, I guess, we have been trying to get some grants for McMurphy Park. And we are not able to, we're not getting the grants. And we want to expand that park, we have lots of plans for that park to, for the community. And it seems like when we did Warden Park this year, the community was really excited about it, and they're utilizing it. And I've been down a couple of times with my family and stuff and been asking and stuff, and they really seemed to really like everything that we've done. So I, it kind of sparked us that we really want to try to do something with McMurphy. And it's such a draw during the summertime that it would be just, I think, be utilized, and I think everybody would be on board with it. So, we came up with an idea that, I guess John's been having problems with bathroom issues with the porta potties down there. Getting vandalized and just not being very sanitized, and, I mean, they're porta potties, and we all know how those are and stuff like that. So, the mayor had some suggestions for us. Well, actually, I think it was Kelly had some suggestions that we get maybe an above-ground bathroom. And they, I mean, basically, you see those in the, when you go to campground, so they're just basically a hole in the ground, and they got above-ground toilet, and they're very tall, and they're kind of scary when you look at it because they're a long ways down and stuff. But they do, they're a lot nicer looking than the porta potties, in my opinion. So, I have some prices and some copies of what the structures would look like. Would like to look at that. I think they're roughly, cost-wise, would be around $60,000, $63,000. And that would cover everything for the insulation, the hole in the ground, the very nice building to go around it. It's, at first, I was, I would rather, when I was told about the idea, I was thinking, well, use that money to maybe save it, raffle it, and go on with some other projects and stuff. But it always seems like when we started doing things with Warden Park, we were, it sparked everybody's interest in the community with parks and stuff. And so, maybe a little bit here will spark the community to get some more interest in trying to get some more funding. And we'll keep applying for grants and stuff, and so if we are able to get some grants, then we can fill in with that type of stuff and go from there. But, I mean, to get everything up and going to where we want it, I mean, we're looking at probably $300,000. So, this is be, just a little bit of a start to get something down there for the community. So, I don't know, if you have any questions for me, I don't have anything really else past that. If you want me to talk, we were adjourned until the first year, so I knew you guys were talking about budgets this year, so, or tonight and stuff. So I wanted to get something in, in your guys' heads and see where we could go from that. But I think also, we wanted to see if this could be something that the city could, or the city council could annually provide for us or give us, not give us, but it would be for the community anyway. But we're, our budget for, is, I can't remember, I should have brought the budget that you printed out for us, and I can't remember what the numbers were. But, I mean, we only have like $11,000 for anything else. So, to buy something like this, we're gonna need some, either some grants or some donations or help from the city council, from the city. So, our budget is basically not big enough to provide what we need.
Is there water out there now?
We, we don't have, we have to get hooked up, and that costs money from the county and all that stuff. So, no, we don't have that.
There were, at one point, way back then, way, way back when, there was a line that was ran from the last, last house on Inanan, as you go towards the park, to the park. But at some point, the water got turned off, and so the water was stagnant in the line. And so now the county wants to have a new line put in because the line has gone septic. And so, they need to replace it before it becomes potable again. They've had a couple of suggestions where, since the line that's there right now is large, the idea would be to just
Leave it?
Leave that there and slip another smaller flexible polyline through that one. So there are some options there, but the water is off, and they do want some type of plumbing work before it happens, before it gets turned back on.
And have we, have we looked into how much that is?
I do not know how much that is.
And is that, the park is lower than, there's no sewer out there?
No, it's correct, yeah. The only sewer on that side of the road tracks is at the industrial area, and it is a, it's a private line to that building under the railroad tracks. It's not a city line.
We were gonna have to get probably basically a septic system, yeah.
For those of, for those folks at home, the bathroom is similar to the current two-stall bathroom that's at Warden Park. But instead of flush toilets like at Warden Park, it would have tanks under the ground.
Vault.
And they would, yeah, and they would get pumped on a regular basis.
Yeah, like State Park vault style toilets.
Yeah, the structure itself is extremely similar to the Warden Park structure. So, I know the, I know the park board is gonna be asking for this of the council, and I was kind of, kind of did some initial checking to see how we could make that happen. The city has two sorts of, two sources of funds that we could use for something like this. There's about $39,000 left of the ARPA COVID relief money that hasn't been spent. If you remember from the mayor's letter, it was not allocated, and so that money is sitting there, that's 39,000. Also, it has REIT funds. REIT funds are taxes on home sales, and we get, putting on the price of the home around $500 per home that's sold. And so we regularly get income from that. There are rules from the state on what we can and can't spend that revenue on. Capital improvement projects such as this would be allowed. And so, if you remember, we use REIT funds as matching, as the matching source for the Warden Park playground project. So, currently, there's $104,000 in the REIT fund. We anticipate probably by the end of the year that we should have, next year, that we should have at least 130 in there, if not more, depending on how the subdivisions go. So, there, between the ARPA money and the REIT funds, there are two different sources where something like this could be afforded by the city.
And those funds are based in an account style, right? Or they're not like a grant that dries up, those are funds that'll be available in 2024.
That's correct, yeah, the ARPA money was just a one-time deposit into the city's general fund. So, so we have that sitting there right now. REIT funds, if you look at the monthly reconciliations that get sent out, you'll see REIT line items in there. We have those in our account already, and they do continue to reaccumulate as homes are sold. And so, I think the state gives us a deposit on a quarterly basis, does that sound right? I think REITs get deposited or account on a quarterly basis, and of course, it depends if there are homes that sold. If no home sold, then we don't get that, I think it's a half a percent on the sale price of the house, something like that. Yeah, two, two and quarter percents, is that correct, does that sound right? Yeah, yeah, so, so half a percent per house is what we get, so depending on the price of the house, we'd get more of that. That's true, yeah, it does, it does reaccumulate. We had around 100,000 in there when we started the Warden Park project, and the city used, we were gonna use about 80 as our matching funds, and that money has already re-accumulated back to before the Warden. So, if this is something that, it's just a, something the council's interested, we can talk about it together in the budget discussion. And we could try to figure out how to fit it into the budget for the final budget at the next council meeting.
That's a hard question, but how often do these get pumped out? And when, when they do get pumped out, that's like a whole septic clean-out, right? It's not just a.
We would have to hire a septic company to come out.
So how often is that?
Well, I, that, I don't, I mean, I don't know how big the tanks are, so that, I'd have to, I could find out how big the tanks are, and.
These are 750, I believe.
Seven, seven or six gallons?
Yeah, we have the porta potties at McMurphy. Now, we have Goble come out on a regular basis to clean them during the summer, to clean them as well as pump them out. So, we're already doing this just at a smaller scale and more often.
Right. The ones that I've seen.
And is that out of the city budget, or the, is that out of the parks budget?
The.
The maintenance of the porta potties.
Yeah, it comes out of the parks budget, which is still the city, but, but yeah, it's a, it's a parks budget line item.
Gotcha.
Is there, and I know this is, well, we're gonna be talking about this in.
Absolutely, Ken.
Okay. Because I have a couple other thoughts.
Sure. Okay. Thanks, Ken.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for.
Thank you, Ken.
Thank you.
Good to hear from the, from the parks about.
If there's anything else that you guys have questions and stuff, and the mayor has my contact information, Kelly, whatever, I can. I have lots of free time during the day, I can make phone calls and stuff, so that's what I'm usually good at, so.
Have you guys talked any, and the park board, have you guys talked anything about RV parking?
Yes.
Out there?
That's one of my goals.
Okay. Okay.
But then, one of my, that was Kelly's, and my goal was to have about three to five pads out there. And first of all, that would generate income. Two, it would keep security, because John does a lot of, have, and sheriffs and stuff like that, so we wouldn't have to have the security down there. And then my other thing is, we would hopefully try to hire a person down there to camp down there, a camp post down there. And then that person could take over John's duties as far as mowing and that type of stuff. So John could work on other stuff, because during the summertime, that stuff is, that park takes up a lot of his time. John and his assistant, I can't remember who his assistant is, Mike, I knew it was Mike.
Michael.
Anyway, so that's, that's our goal, is to have the, some type of RV place there. Kelly has a picture of, a diagram of what we want, right? As you come in, right on the left-hand side, I think you want to put about three to five pads, depending on spaces and stuff. And I'm an RVer, so I, I like to have my space, so I want to make sure we have good separation from, for camping spots. But I think that would be a great area to have. Like I said, security down there would be taken care of and stuff like that, so. That's my major goal, and that's pretty much one reason why I've stuck on with the board so long, because I want to see that done.
Yeah. Well, I was just thinking, and hearing them just talking about it, the parking RVs down there, which most RVs are going to want or need full hookups.
Right.
So if we got water down there and a septic system down there, then this would kind of be obsolete.
Correct.
And so do we want to spend 60 grand on something that we're trying to not have in the long run?
It's not entirely correct, so this bathroom, if we were to put that down below closer to the creek, any septic would be up above, at the higher elevation in the park. And so, any bathroom that would be down below where people are using it on a frequent basis, we'd have to get, we'd have to have water down there. We'd have to have, you know, electricity and a grinder pump to pressure, have a pressurized line to get back up the hill. And so it'd be, it's a little bit more than just having a bathroom down there, right? And so, I mean, this could be the better way to go regardless of, if there was a larger septic up on the hill. Just to have a simple vault system down, down below on the lower elevation.
Even with the, the, I don't know, clean-outs?
I mean, we're already doing clean-outs now, so.
Well, I know we're doing the clean-outs now, and those are like 50, 60 bucks.
Yeah, I'm not sure.
But, yeah, those are also like 40, 50 gallons, not 700 gallons.
Well, probably do more, not 700, but, I know, I see what you're saying.
Yeah.
But it's also, you know, when are we gonna have the money to put a septic in? I mean, it's gonna be, it would be a much larger project, because you have septic out there, to get water out there, now you've got to get. So just getting utilities out to the park is a large project. And then after that, then if we put a bathroom down below, you know, how much less expensive would it be than this? Probably not, probably wouldn't be less expensive than this. And then we have to run those utilities down the hill, so. I don't, I personally don't think this is a waste if at some point in the future, we had utilities for a larger bathroom up on the hill. So I think the long-range plan, I think that was, that was designed, was that there'd be something like this down below, just like a simple vault system. And then up above, closer to where the RV, the small RV area would be, and then a larger kitchen shelter, there'd be a bigger bathroom facility with a couple showers, two public restrooms. And then that, that facility would be connected to water and a septic.
That's been our goal, but it's like, like the mayor said, I don't think it's, it's not going to get utilized, I think, because there's so many people that go down there during the summertime, they're not gonna walk up, want to walk up all the way up to the hill. So this would get that done. It, I went back and forth saying, well, do I want to spend $60,000 now on a bathroom here, or would I like to put that money towards the bigger project, the bigger idea and stuff like that? And it's just been, we've been stagnant for so long that I, and like I said in the beginning, having Warden Park, what we did and accomplished with that, it rejuvenated everybody, and so just having this thing might rejuvenate, and then we might be, I don't know.
Yeah. True.
Okay?
Thanks, Ken.
All right, thank you, have a good night, and happy Thanksgiving, everybody.
Thanksgiving.
All right, bye.
Moving on to the public hearing for the 2024 final budget. The time is now 6:29 PM. I will open the public hearing for the preliminary 2024 final budget now. At this time, I would like to open the hearing to the public for comment. And at this time, the floor is open for comment from the audience. And I'm not going to read the rest of that paragraph. Will you ever satisfy?
Yeah.
All right.
We need to make that flow a little bit better, though.
I'll get it down, I've got four more years. All right, so the only folks online are Mr. Ferguson and Mr. Hall. Mr. Notch, do you have any comments? Did you phrase it?
Make a motion to close the public hearing, how's that sound?
Last one more time, if anyone has any comments on the budget. All right. Hearing none, at this time, I'll close the hearing for public comment. And I guess we will do a further council discussion at the next item in the agenda. Just hearing is closed at 6:31 PM. You all nervous now with all these spirits? You did fine.
We're like over this, I don't care.
All right, item number one on the agenda, council discussed the 2024 budget estimates for the general fund. So the numbers that were good to you, it is largely unchanged, except the, on the, if you look at the overview sheet, the 2024 ending, the 2020, 2024 beginning balances have been updated to take into account the end of, the end of October, monthly reconciliations. Other than that, the items in the budget have not been changed. Except for one item, to get the, get the general fund to, or the, excuse me, the current fund, get the current fund to balance out the street fund and the park fund where we organize. So it's all the same fund, but just the transfers in and out were modified. But the actual dollar amount for each item stayed the same. Any discussions on this, or anything the park board presented? There is one other thing, there's the salary structure. So if, there are two different salary schedules here. There is the, the one that matches kind of what we were, we talked about before. There's been discussion within, among the staff, to do a little bit of reorganization with the duties of the different clerks in the office. And so currently, we've got a city clerk treasurer, a deputy permitting and financial clerk, and a deputy billing clerk. Right now, we've been pretty much. Right now, we've been pretty much putting most of the building and planning on the deputy clerk. And so uh the thought was to reorganize some of those tasks so that um we would have, instead of having two different, a a permitting, a permitting and financial clerk and a deputy billing clerk, we would have a building and planning lead and then a deputy clerk. So so changing that, changing the the name around a little bit, better describe that position. Also, to um adjust the salary schedule to be s- towards someone who's be more of a more uh skilled and professional in that uh in that category, and so um we've done the math on that as far as, you know, those those salaries increased a little bit. That position would have a reduction in hours. And so that reduction in hours would compensate for the increase in pay that that person position would see. And I believe I'm correct, that would actually save money, is that correct, Lisa?
Um changing that position will save approximately five thousand two hundred and forty two dollars.
So so it's actually doing that um would potentially get us someone who has more expertise in that category. And um save us money at the same time, so that would be the the proposal. So right now, I what I am, and what I envisioned for that position um eventually, you know, right now on our wastewater treatment plant, we have um Bill is extremely skilled in that position. He's in a position in his life where he doesn't want to work full time, and so he very much enjoys this position. I envision our building and planning lead to be the same thing, someone who has um extensive experience in in uh that type of uh work, but doesn't necessarily want to work full time. So in the past, when we've when we've tried to hire for this position, we've hired we've tried to find a jack of all trades, who's someone who has skills in financial um and skills. Actually, that's just generally what we've looked for, someone who has skills in the financial department. And we think that maybe in the future, um moving all the financial responsibilities to to the other two clerks and then having this be primarily kind of a building and construction kind of thing.
So they would, they would they take care of the notice of violations also?
The idea would be also that they would take that role on from from the clerk treasurer. So instead of the clerk treasurer being our code enforcement, uh this building and planning lead could also could be our code enforcer. And they would, that would be one of their primary responsibilities besides permitting. Right now, another example, right now, uh Public Works, John, um whenever there's like sewer locates or anything like that, John is the one that goes out and does all these sewer locates. Um a building and planning lead could do that instead, so John doesn't have to anymore.
Which, since you brought John up, he's maxed out, right?
Salary schedule from this year, he's maxed out, the restructured one would start him back at step one.
Okay, good.
If you compare those two salary structures and if you look at the public, public works lead, if you compare the two, the restructure starts out where he's at now, and so he could continue to see regular pay raises. And if you look at that, what the new step one would be for what his position is, I find that to be more reasonable anyway, given the level of responsibility.
So the restructuring you worked, you guys have worked it into the the budget? And it fits?
Actually, the budget would be, the budget numbers don't reflect that, the budget would be would be like the the savings of five thousand dollars, that's correct, correct?
Right, it the, yeah, those numbers don't reflect the current budget. I wanted to kind of get a feel of what you thought about the restructure before I start putting those numbers into the budget.
Yeah, I think, I think, I don't know what you guys think, but I think that we should restructure this and get because we've got some good employees, at least a couple of them. I was just joking, um but they are uh good employees right now, work their weight in gold, so. I agree.
Agreed.
Of the restructure.
And the summer help.
Right, and so also in the in the restructure, uh one of the things that we've talked about is, you know, right now, we've got our public works assistant, he he, this year was the first year that he was um year round. And what we found is that during the uh the winter months, um it was kind of tough to find things for him to do. And so this restructure proposal has him going back down to just six months. So it would be a, it would be a seasonal, a seasonal position again, say April through, you know, April through the end of September.
Actually, I would like to propose a um a summer help instead of seasonal.
Summer.
Is and it's sixteen weeks, so seasonal would be reoccurring every year. But if we don't need somebody one year, we have that option of summer help of not hiring somebody. And then we also don't have to do like a a step schedule for it, it would just be that's just what the pay is every year for that.
I I I even have summer help listed on here and I called it seasonal, so. And and obviously, this was taking input from John.
And that also cuts down on our uh vacation pay, holiday pay and sick time. So his savings would actually be more like if we went down to summer help from part time, it's a ten thousand dollar, three hundred, ten thousand, three hundred dollar savings per year.
And I believe that is in, that that savings is already in.
I did put that in the budget.
Look at that, so everybody's happier and we're saving money. It's beautiful.
Hope everyone's happy here. So. Just the city is the city uh grows and changes and as as do the uh skill levels of our employees. And we're just trying to think about ways to be more efficient.
So I like the restructure.
Okay, super. That was it on the changes between uh last meeting and this meeting, just the restructure, a little bit of some money savings there and then um just a little bit of reorganization with the uh the all the park street and current revenue and just kind of shifting it around so everything balances out.
Is there a location, I know it's not out at McMurphy Park right now, but is there a an RV dump site area that we could do?
In Castle Rock.
Well, I know right now it's in Castle.
So one that Bader would own and maintain?
Yeah. Like it, can we put one down by the by the sewer plant? Because Castle Rock is free, which is nice, it, but it's also twelve miles away or whatever it is.
Should have said that four years ago when we designed the sewer plant.
Well, I wasn't hitting the RV dumps like I am now.
We could have, we could have designed it in and gotten it paid for in the grants. I just take a hose and dump it right into the, right into that first chamber, I bet.
There's, I I just thought, I thought of it the other day because I've been going to Castle Rock. And I thought, you know, it'd be worth ten bucks. I know uh the city of or through all up state fair charges twenty bucks for non campers. And we've got Ryder Wood with people that have them, we've got the daily storage for people that store their RVs there. And um I I think the next closest one is Castle Rock.
Probably, Tilly, Tilly Kemp Olson has one as well, I'm not sure if it's open right now, but Tilly Park has one.
Oh, they do?
I want the Toodle Park.
Toodle?
Not Toodle. What exit is that? I'll have to ever think of what exit, right by the um Space Age. And then across the street, we go up.
Oh.
Orange Drive, the Orange Drive right there.
That uh the the huge RV facility that's across the highway from Space Age along the river.
Oh, oh, yeah, they do have one there. Yeah, yeah, exit fifty two, and I know that they charge because I went there once and if I'm going there, I might as well, by the time I get to that, on Castle Rock's just a couple more miles, we're free. But I don't know, I just thought.
How does that work? Is there just like a, like a four inch hose or something like that?
Yeah, it's just a
That comes out of the RV?
Like a clean out um in the ground, and then as an RVer, you have a hose that you hook on and then it goes down to that, to that uh
Does it slip in or does it clip on or?
It's, sometimes it just slips in and sits there and there's usually, they have, usually they have a big rock sitting right there and then you set the rock on top of it to hold it down. And then it's got like a four by four cement slope down with a curve around it. And then they have a non potable water supply. And so RVers, you take your hose out, you put it in the thing, you pull your things, and then you use that non potable water to rinse everything and wash it all down and.
Yeah, I mean, there, you can drive right up down at the new sewer plant, you can drive right up to the chamber right before the, it gets screened. And it's just raw sewage, it just gets right there, and so you could, I could see someone just putting it right in there, but the problem is, if you got an RV in there, there's no place to turn around.
Yeah, and I don't know if it's, if it's right there or if there's a
We'd have to put in a
Spot somewhere that we can do it.
I'm hearing another reason for McMurphy to have a septic system, you know, like I think there's any more uh development down there, you know, before like water and some kind of septic. You know, before uh that, and that would work for what Mike's talking about.
And I agree with that, I'm just trying to think, because it wouldn't cost us hardly anything and it might make a little bit of revenue that could go to the park. Also, if it was at the school, there's a huge sewer thing right there at the school.
I mean, I wonder if there's like, like a manhole, like if you, if there's like, if there was like an attachment for like a manhole cover that something that's that already exists, you pull the lid, you snap it on, and you just drive up to the manhole.
So
And you just clip in and right in the hole you go.
In Citrus Heights, California, all the people in my cousin's neighborhood, they have their clean out in at the front of their house for their sewer system, and they all use that. Everybody uses that, I felt really weird, in fact, I felt like yelling at my crapper's full, Laura, while I was out there doing this. But uh, yeah, that's what they do, it's so it's just a four inch.
Nothing special.
Clean out, yeah, nothing special at all. And I was, I was actually at the school yesterday across on D Street, the little school, and there's a big sewer pipe right in the middle there. And it's not like it makes a mess or I mean, it's not that big of a deal. And they could, if the, if we got permission from the school, they'd be able to pull in the school and pull right back out, get right back out on the roof. So.
Okay. We'll talk to some folks. Budget discussion? All right, any other, no other discussion, we can move on to the next uh item of city business. Item number two, council would consider ordinance twenty twenty three oh eight property tax levy rate for twenty twenty four. So um so that's the the discuss, the item for the council decide, um do we remain unchanged? Do we raise the, raise the levy a little bit, or not raise it at all?
I say we stay unchanged, we don't raise anything this year.
No new taxes.
Yeah, I think everybody's paying way too many taxes right now anyway. So. And we're going to have to, not to jump ahead, but because it has a line item behind it, the sewer is going to have to go up. So that's as big of a hit that I want to give anybody this year.
The trash pickup is going up, the sewer is going up, I mean, it's seven dollars a month for some people that can't really afford it, I guess, you know? I don't, I don't see us increasing anybody's taxes.
Should they vote to not increase?
Have to vote on it.
Okay.
So I'll make the motion that we um not increase, leave it the same, is that?
Unchanged?
Unchanged levy this year.
Motion that we would vote for the ordinance and then you would vote against it. You would make the motion to approve the ordinance and then when you have the chance to vote, you would vote against it.
Mike don't want a motion to approve it.
Or is it a motion to approve it and then deny it?
Well, you need a motion to, like, you're just making the motion to approve the ordinance.
Yeah.
And then when you, like, everybody yea or nay, you would pay, and then it wouldn't, it wouldn't pass. So I don't know if anybody has, like, mayor can make the motions, I believe, if all three of you are against it.
Where's Randy on this one?
Approve the ordinance with a zero, with a zero percent change.
Yeah.
Okay, so I make a motion that we approve ordinance resolution number zero two or two zero two three dash zero eight with a zero percent increase.
A motion by Mr. Parsons to approve, to approve ordinance twenty twenty three oh eight uh with a zero percent increase, is there a second?
I will second that.
Executive by Ms. Ferguson, any other discussion? All those in favor of ordinance twenty twenty three zero dash zero eight approving a zero percent increase in the property tax levy, say aye.
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 Any opposed, motion carries. Moving on to item number three, council to consider resolution twenty dash twenty twenty three banking property tax levy capacity. And so this is just the uh next logical step in the in the process where we bank all of our capacities so that the city could use it later, at a later date. Um and so I believe there are two resolutions in here, is that correct?
Yeah.
So there are two resolutions for twenty, that's twenty twenty three, they're both a little different. One has blanks in it where um if you had approved um a levy, we could have used that, um you could enter in the the, whatever the differences would be. But the second one in your packet But the second one in your packet, um. Without the blanks that actually talk about the percentages.
Twenty-one, twenty, twenty-three.
This one. So there's two of these.
One has the.
There's two of these back to back.
Bank all of it and one has been partial.
Yeah, and so. Yeah, so that's not the one then. It'll be the next one. Keep looking through. And so.
Um, we would be banking, um, everything that we have so far. So I believe we have eighteen point two nine percent.
Nineteen point four seven.
So, and well, then it would go up to nineteen.
So if you look at section one of, of the resolution, um, the one that would be. Be selected for banking all of the capacity and it reads the following. It is the intent of the city council to preserve. All of it, all of its available bank capacity pursuant to RCW. Of fifteen thousand eight dollars and sixty-seven cents and all available but unused capacity is here banked. This number does not include the nine hundred and seventy dollars and seventy-five cent annual allowable increase. That's the one percent a year. The total bank capacity is then fifteen thousand nine hundred and seventy-nine dollars and forty-two cents. For a total of nineteen point four seven one three nine six nine six six percent. And so that saves all of our. Capacity for a later, later date.
So I make a motion that we approve resolution number twenty dash twenty twenty-three. And then when I read the section one.
Just say. Just say banking.
Banking.
All of our capacity.
All of our capacity.
Oh, we have a motion from.
I'll second that.
Pro twenty twenty-three, twenty dash twenty twenty-three, uh, banking all of our levy capacity. Um, I believe it was just seconded by Mr. Ferguson. Further discussion? All right, this will make the city of Vader the, uh, second highest city in the county for bank capacity. Well, third if you count Centralia, but I don't count Centralia. Uh, any other discussion?
Maybe we can set a record for the least taxed property owners in this county.
Well, that would be something. We just need something to offset our, uh, property tax revenue first. All right, any other discussion? Probably not. All those in favor of approving resolution twenty twenty-three, twenty dash twenty twenty-three, banking all of our property tax levy capacity. Say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay. Item number four, council to discuss twenty twenty-four budget estimates for the sewer fund. So sewer fund, again, the budget is unchanged from, uh, what you saw at the previous meeting. Uh, it still does in, include, um, a six percent, uh, rate increase. To compensate for the, to start to compensate for the increased costs of the new sewer plant. Need discussions?
I reviewed it and it seems necessary.
Any other discussion?
Twenty, so it's twenty-one dash twenty twenty-three.
That would be the next line item of city business. Uh, let's go ahead and move on then to, um, item number five of. City business council to consider resolution twenty-one dash twenty twenty-three, the sewer schedule of fees and charges. So this is, this would be, uh, updating the fee schedule to include that six percent increase.
I make a motion that we approve resolution twenty-one dash twenty twenty-three sewer schedule and fees and charges. Second.
First by Mr. Parsons, second by Mr. Ferguson. Um, I should have also pointed out, um, again, there are two resolutions in your packet for the same thing. Uh, twenty-one dash twenty twenty-three. Um, the first one, uh, did not include the six percent increase. And so if we're voting on.
With the six percent increase.
With the six percent increase, um, that would be the second resolution in your packet. Um, obviously it has the higher, slightly higher numbers in it compared to the first one. So. So, uh, Mr. Ferguson, um, just to clarify, did you second the, um, resolution with the six percent increase?
Yes, sir.
All right. Any other discussion?
Operating costs are something that we really don't have control over and neither are materials. Um, you know. As compared to property taxes. That's all I have to say about it.
Um. Um, all those in favor of approving your resolution twenty-one dash twenty twenty-three? Say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. All right. Item number six, uh, council to consider ordinance twenty twenty-three dash zero nine, uh, setting the citywide speed limit. Um, so this was by, uh, council was talking about this, um, attorney wrote it up. This is the, this would, uh, set a citywide speed limit. Um, right now the city does not have a citywide speed limit and so we default to what state RCW is, which is twenty-five. Um, this would, um, this allows the city, this ordinance would allow the city, uh, to make the new speed limit twenty miles an hour, um, on all city streets.
And you said we don't have a speed limit. I was gonna postpone this for a week and go have some fun.
Well, in the, in the state's infinite wisdom, they have default speed limits for a variety of roads, including cities. That, uh, that would trump any non-speed limit, so.
I make a motion that we approve ordinance twenty twenty-three dash zero nine, setting the citywide speed limit.
We have a motion by Mr. Parsons to approve ordinance twenty twenty-three dash zero nine, setting the citywide speed limit of twenty miles an hour. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by, I think I heard Mr. Hall first that time. Any discussion?
I, I would, uh, also listen in, you take down the twenty-five mile an hour sign. On, uh. Eighth Street with, with Navy pants. There's a twenty-five mile an hour sign going down the gravel road.
Okay. All right, yeah, there's two twenty-five mile an hour signs on Eighth Street as well. Um, the, our thoughts on this is if, if it were to get approved, um, early in the new year, uh, we'd apply for the, uh. The grant through our insurance agency again, to see if we can get them to, um, foot the bill for the signs.
Nice.
So we were gonna, we were gonna wait a month to order, order, try to get the signs, so.
Okay, well, I just wanted that, that sign to be changed fifteen.
Yep, no problem. All right. Any other discussion? Alls, all those in favor of ordinance twenty twenty-three zero nine? Say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. All right. Second to the last item, uh, on the agenda, number seven. Uh, council to discuss the water receivership agreement extension. So two months ago, I had a, uh, a sit down with the county manager, our county public works lead and our commissioner. And, um, they agreed that, uh, the city could ask for a two-year extension and that they would support that. Um, after two months, they finally, um, got us their. Um. Their version of an extension and along with the extension came a request that. Um, in this agreement, the city would pay for all costs, uh, for repairs and. Um. Improvements, um, immediately, um, during this year extension time period. And even if the city didn't take back the water system at the end of the two-year period, uh, we would not be reimbursed for those expenses. Um, this is, this was certainly not a, uh. Not ideal. And so, uh, we talked to the attorney about it and she came up with a, a couple of different options. Um, you know, one of the options obviously is for us to say, no, we just want an extension. Um, but it would seem unlikely that they would, they would accept that. And so, uh, the two options, other options before you, um, option two. Um, option two would be. Oh, it's from the back. Oh, my. Um. The city would pay for all the costs, all costs immediately during the two-year extension. Um, but if the city did not take the water system back at the end of the two years. Uh, the county would reimburse us for all those funds that we. That we paid. That's one, one, one thought. And the other thought, option three, um, the city. Would agree to pay for all the costs accumulated during the two-year extension, but those payments would not be due. Uh, until after the city took ownership of the system.
That's, that's the only one I would think of, and I think you said it way too nicely. Because I think what, uh, happened is we asked for the extension and they strung us along. To the very end so that we don't really have a choice and they think that we're under the barrel. And I think that that was. Dirty, but.
I, and, and, I have my own thoughts on that. I mean, one of them is. You know, the water system is a self. A, a, a self-contained entity. It has a budget. We pay into it. You know, over the next two years, if, if we, if the city was not interested in taking it back. Um, the sys, the water system would have paid for its own repairs. And so. To ask for an additional source of revenue from the, from the city, uh, to pay for something that they already have the revenue for supposedly. I'm sure they do. Um, it just seems a little, a little odd. I do know that they have integrated multiple water systems into their operations. So the county doesn't just operate the Vader water system. Um, I think there's the Middle Fork, I think it's the Middle Fork Water System as well. There's one over in Alaska. And so they've co, kind of co-mingled the operations budgets of these where they have the same operator, they have the same engineer, they have. All of this, all these things. So I'm sure it would not be easy for them to just. Peel Vader away and then still, and, and still be able to run everything smoothly. Um, but, um, it is a little. Does rub me a little, a little bit the wrong way. Um, and as far as their, their initial proposal of the city. Paying for all costs upfront, uh, before we have the water system back. Um, I find it. Difficult to imagine where we would find it in our current fund. To pay for someone else's water system repairs.
Yes.
Seeing as we don't have revenue from, for a water system right now. And so that is also a, a concern. So, um, I could, my question for the council, I said, I just got this yesterday. And so we put these three options together in the last thirty-six hours, twenty-four hours. I need to, I need to send one of these back to, to the county. Um, which one is it? What response do you want to have for the county? I, I also agree that option.
I, I feel like.
Option.
I, I re, I reviewed my email that I received from, um. The clerk and I haven't had a chance to review that paperwork, Joe. So I, I don't even really know what I'm looking at as far as options to advise.
I can read them pretty real quick. They're, they're, they're pretty short. Um, I mean, the, the, it's, the, the agreement looks fairly long, but the meat is, is num, is the, uh.
There's not really, there's really only one option, that's option.
It's section D of the agreement, uh, section D, line two. Um, there's a, there's a number one, a number two and number three. And thi, this is, this is what the county sent us initially. Um, and I'll paraphrase, um, city shall pay county in full in advance. For any and all improvements and repairs to the water system, which are deemed necessary by county. As in the best interest of the users of the water system. When county determines that such an improvement or repair is necessary, county shall notify city in writing. Provide a reasonable explanation of the basis for the improvement and provide a deadline for when the payment for the improvement is due. Should city not make any payment for an improvement or repair by the due date. Um, such a default shall be deemed as material breach of the agreement. And, and so that, that's what the county sent us. And so.
So that's moving, that's moving forward. That would be like from today on, like, if there's something wrong with your system in your city. You're gonna require, be required to pay for it.
That's correct.
But what about? What about the revenue from? Us owning that system like that's.
We wouldn't own it at that time. So they're asking us to pay for repairs on a system that we don't own and we don't have revenue for.
So you guys, so I think, I think in less words, like you guys kind of know where I stand on that as well. Like, I don't. I don't want to pay for something that we're not, we don't have yet, but we have to, at some point. We're gonna have to tap into the funds to finance getting our water system back or. I mean, without water, there's no life. So I, I don't. I don't know how important it is for us to be tied to the county for our police services, tied to the county for our water. You know, and then we just maintain our poop? Like, I, I don't know.
So that's, yeah, and. And so that, we were, that's why the, the, our attorney had put together a couple of other, other options where. Instead of us paying for a utility that we don't have yet. Um, and then also pretty much assuming all the risk, you know? We pay for something and if something comes up and the city can't get the water back, we're out all of that money. Um, that just seemed unreasonable. And so the, the, the modification, one of the modifications to the contract would be that. We do agree to pay for the costs. Um, but if the city didn't get this, the water system back at the end of the two years, the county would reimburse us. For all of the costs that we pay. So that was, that was one option. And then the other option that we, that we could propose is. Um, again, yes, we agree to pay for all the costs, but not upfront. The county could keep a running tab of the costs in two years or whenever it is, when we get the water system back. We would have a grace period at, at which point we'd be able to pay, uh, pay for those repairs that accumulated. And so at that time, we would own the water system, we would have water system revenue. Um, and then we could pay back the county. So that was the third option. On the contracts that, that, that we could propose to the county.
So even on the third option though. Um. That money would come. Out to pay for what has been done. It would come out of the revenue of the water this department. To pay for it.
Which presumably they, presumably they had already.
Which, yeah, they already have it.
So where did the extra money go that we paid into the system that we're paying them?
Yeah, so is that.
That's a good question. Yeah, I know. It, it's a little, it's a little odd. Um, you know, if, if they no longer have the water system, yeah, obviously they're gonna use the money the water system is currently generating to pay for any repairs. And then in two, we, we get this, the water system back and then we have to go pay for that, those repairs that are already done. No longer own the water system, where does that money go? Are they gonna take it and they're gonna put it in their general fund or are they gonna, are they gonna take it and are they gonna put it in the, in the other water system they currently run? You know, there's some unknowns there. It, it is a little odd, um. I don't know where that money's gonna go, but. Uh, in, in any of these cases, assuming that the council. Agrees to any, any one of these three, um, and, and that if county. Accepted our proposal, our counter proposal, um, it would certainly be in the city's interest to get the water back, system back. Immediately and not let the county.
And all we have to do is start the process. All we have to do is start the process by the end of this year, correct?
So there are, there are several things that have to be done before we, before we start the request. And one of those is a water system action plan that, um, that SCJ and Alliance had, had started working on for us. So there are, there are a few things that have to be done first.
And, and the deadline for that.
The deadline, the deadline for that, if we were not to do an extension at all, it's like December sixteenth, I think. Yes. And, and, and there's too much to do before December sixteenth. And, and there's too much to do before December sixteenth. It's not possible.
So. I think that we go. I say we go with option three, because it's the least evil of all of them. And then we have the agreement to, and then we just start nailing it. Put everything else, put this in front of everything else, and get our water back, and. And then make sure that. The newspaper knows that they want us to take care of their trucks for them. And I, and I'm gonna call this Josh guy and tell him I have a transmission that needs to be replaced in my truck, and I know it's not his truck, but I'd like for him to pay for it. That's just ridiculous. But that's why they took so long to get us approved, so.
I think it's one of those cases. I, I, I am, I'm not immediately on the conspiracy bandwagon that they drug their feet on purpose. I, I think it's, I think more than likely, it's a. Our expense emergency, it's not their problem. Kind of thing, which is also upsetting a little bit, that, you know, we can't all work together, and we're all in the same county here, so. But anyway.
One thing that we haven't talked about with this whole water thing is, you know, they, the plan of them replacing a bunch of the water line, right? Up, up through this way, I know they had mentioned that, and then with all the new addition of all the, the homes and stuff, is that? Would that be under that, that bill, you know, on option one, that they were talking about?
It, it's. There are no. It is not detailed, I mean, it just, I mean, it's pretty much, I mean. I mean, it's a. The city shall pay county in full for any and all improvements and repairs, any and.
Improvements, there's the word, there's the word right there, improvements, so, like, them replacing the water lines, so I, I. I feel, I feel like our, whoever came before me. Whoever allowed the water to, you know, to slip out of the hands of the city of Vader. Like, they really failed us big time, because now we got a big mess to clean up.
Well, the problem, actually, the thing on that was. The per, they didn't fail us because we have the option to get it back, the county never wanted to give us the option to get it back. They just wanted it, and so the city council at that time, or the mayor at that time, fought to keep the water, the ability to get the water back. So, and, because we were going, the city was going to lose it regardless, it wasn't really up to us, but at least they fought to. Keep the option of getting it back. Does that make sense?
Totally makes sense, and I, and I, I appreciate that, and I value that, but it sounds like it's a, you know, a big hurdle right now. So I, I think that option three, is that what you were, you were leaning toward, Mike?
Yeah, I think that's the, the best of the worst, they're all, they're all garbage, but.
I, I think what I might do is, if, if council approves, you know, do option three. But I'll talk, I can talk to the attorney about putting some, a limit, limits. On that, any and all improvements and repair, I know the county already has like a two million dollar line replacement project that's about to go out for bid. And the last thing I want is, and, and they've got, they have budgeted money for that, some of that's COVID relief money. Some sorts of grants, I don't want on January first, them to dump a two million dollar improvement.
Yeah, and then we're supposed to pay the county that, not the water system.
We're instantly, instantly unable to get it, so, I think, I, I think if. I want to put a little bit of, a little bit of filtering on that comment, if, if council.
And I'm, I'm a hundred percent with you on that, Joe, that's, you know, we have to be able to. If, if we're gonna have the water system, we have to be able to staff it with qualified people, and that's not gonna be cheap. But we already have money budgeted that we pay the county, so I, you know, it, I, I know that it's been here before, and we can do it again. We need to make it happen, so I think that's, like Mike said, it's, that should be our frontline, like, issue, that, that's the one.
Okay, all right, well, I think that's the guidance I needed from, from the council on that, we don't have to vote on that or anything, just, just needed a direction to go.
I don't think they give it back at all.
What, Randy?
I don't think the county wants to give it back, that's why they're making it difficult.
Um, yeah, my impression is that, at this point, it's so integrated into their operations that it's actually easier for them to keep it than to try to.
Right, they're, they're.
Not, not, not for any other reason, not needing it necessarily for any reason, just that it's easier to keep it.
So, is the. The water plant is going to be treated like the sewer plant, correct? It's its own entity, like, so we're gonna have a water budget, and we're gonna have a sewer budget, and we're gonna have our general fund. And they can't cross over.
Right, yeah, you wouldn't.
So how can they? Yeah, we'll pay for everything.
Probably have to. We would probably have to integrate them for staffing reasons.
Well, no, even with staffing, like, Lisa gets paid by the, by the sewer for a certain amount of hours. And, but all the budgets are separate, and we can't just take money from our sewer plant and put it into our general fund. We have done that in the past, but it was a loan, and we paid that back. And so I can't see, I don't understand how the county, unless their books are all commingled. How the county could accept payment for the water system that's no longer theirs. Once we have it back, and how they could, how they could, option one or two, how they could take money from us and put it into. Are they gonna put it into the water fund?
Yeah, I, there, I mean, there are some. Some legal, legal questions regarding how, how these funds would get moved around from entity to entity, but, I mean, that's.
So.
That's, I mean. Not really a concern at the moment, but that one, I mean, one obvious thing is that we don't have. Tens or hundreds of thousands of dollars sitting around right now to pay for any improvement that they feel is necessary. And so. We need to have an alternative, so, alternative three was. Okay. I'm moving on to line nine, line, uh, the eighth item on the, on the, on the agenda that we had, a discussion on the police coverage. Just needed, I, I, I already think I, I know the, the feeling, but. The sheriff's department needs to know if we want a updated contract from them. And so if, if we do, we need to let them know right now, so that they can start working on that paperwork for us, so. Is, is Lewis County Sheriff's Department what the city is interested in doing in twenty-twenty-four?
I say yes.
I'd say yes.
Okay. And so we'll relay that to the sheriff's department. Relay. And, and there'll be, there'll be a contract for you all to see and then discuss and consider at a later time. So. That is the end of the city business. Item, public comment, any members of the public have anything to comment?
Joe, this is Kathy.
Oh, Paul, yes.
Yeah, I was just curious, refresh my memories as to why the county took the water over to begin with.
So before everyone's time, but the city was mismanaged, the city was not paying its bills, we have stacks of bills that were unpaid. There were numerous oil warnings, the water was not safe, because the, the, the pipes were broken and leaking and whatnot. And the Department of Health got involved, and there was a court, yeah, and then, and then that is what. Since the city was not able to manage the utility, the utility was taken away from us with just cause. And given to, given to the county to manage. And then. The, the new mayor at the time that inherited that, that mess, Ken Smith, he worked really hard. Yeah, he worked really hard to get this water system receivership agreement in place, so that's his, that's his work. And that's the only rea, that, that piece of, that document is the only reason we're even able to get the water system back, now that it's been taken.
Think that they could see how the city is doing now, and that, you know, we have responsible people in charge, and say, okay, you know, you can take it back.
Yeah, but it's too hard for them to undo their intermingling of funds, they don't manage it back, they're fighting.
Yeah, absolutely, the. In the water, in the water system receivership agreement that was drafted, there are a series of goals, benchmarks that the city has to meet. Before we're able to request the water system back. Those include passing state audits, which we've done numerous times, they include. Proving ourselves able to manage, effectively manage a, a large utility, which we have done year after year with the wastewater treatment plant. And this successful upgrade of that, and so we've done, we've done all those things that, that were in the agreement. And so some of the last things necessary include what. What comes out to be a, a business management plan for the water system, so, a water system action plan. And a variety of other documents needed to effectively run that system, so we still have to put those things together.
Oh.
Who do we utilize to draft those documents, Joe?
Excuse me, Mike, what was that?
Who do we utilize to draft those documents for us?
So, city council had told me a while back to start moving on that, and I asked our planners, SCJ Alliance, to start working on that. And so they have, they did start working on that, and you've probably seen some of those, some of those bills in the, in the vouchers. I told them to pause, though, two months ago, when this two-year extension was coming out, just to give us some breathing room before the end of the year. But. Given this agreement, we probably don't want to pause, so probably get, have to get that going again.
No, I, I think we need to push that and get that going again.
Yeah. Any other public comment? Uh, any elected official comments? None, all right, hearing none, this meeting is adjourned at seven twenty-seven P M. Thank you, everybody.
Happy Thanksgiving, everyone.
Happy Thanksgiving.